Are we set?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to welcome you to the San Luis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning, or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce on my right Mel Wilson, Deputy Director of Planning, and to my far left, the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you've picked up a copy of the public hearing guidelines, brochure, and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list, the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please throw out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you're here for. If you speak, please give me your card as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agendas. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports to make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on January 8th, 2024. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@sanluiscountingmo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commissioners' recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions in points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, we will ask for a show of hands of persons in favor and those in opposition or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 35-23 Charlotte Jane Mason. We'll go with the staff first.
Good evening. PC 35-23 Charlotte Jane Mason is a request for a change in zoning from R5 to R6, 4,500 square foot residence district on a tract size of 0.21 acres located at the west side of McKenzie Road approximately 180 feet north of Gravoy Road. According to the county context map, the subject site is located in the south county. And to the red, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is the land use map. So the north of the subject site is a single family residence and two family residences, as well as acting school district administrative building. Further north across Weber Road is a single family residences in the R5 Residence District. So the east is commercial development. So the south is a church and to the west are single family residence in R5 Residence District. And this is area photograph trying to depict how the subject site is situated among the surroundings. Again, this is a change in zoning from R5 to R6, 4,500 Residence District. The current zoning and use on the petition site tonight is R5, 6,000 square foot residence and having a single family residence. The R5, 6,000 square foot Residence District permits only single family and single family attached dwellings and doesn't permit two family dwellings. And the property has been developed as a two-family prior to when the zoning ordinance was enacted in 1965. The petitioner is proposing a change in zoning to R6, 4,500 Residence District to permit two family residence. So the west showing the public hearing notice. So the west showing the existing building. So the west showing one drive aisle. So the west showing the other driveline towards the north. This is north along McKenzie Road. East across McKenzie Road. South along McKenzie Road. This is the east showing the properties where. West showing the pavement and backyard. West showing western property limit. South. South showing the abutment property, which is a church. Go on, petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner.
I really don't have too much to add to this.
Do you have your, the yellow speaker card?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry.
I could take that.
Thank you.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Charlotte Mason. I'm the owner of this property and in 1940, the Weber family built four buildings. One was intended to be a family home. That would be the second blue one. And the other three, the two white ones and the bottom blue one, were intended to be income-producing duplexes. As you see, the one on the bottom is larger than the other two, and that's the one I own. It's actually a unit with two bedrooms on each side, and the other two have one bedrooms. This was the structure in 1940. Things have changed a little bit, but those buildings have not changed at all. This is the front, as you saw in the other photo, and it operated as a duplex, our two family residence, for 65 years. Then a family member moved into the building and occupied both sides of it, the husband on one side and the wife on the other. So somehow, at that point, it became a single-family unit. But as you can see from this drawing, there are two very separate units. There are two front doors, two water heaters, two water meters, two electric meters, two driveways, two garages, and no access from one side to the other. The property does meet the requirements for R6. I actually have 9,242 square feet, which would, of course, meet the 4,500 square feet requirement. But at the present, it is Zoned R5, which requires 6,000 feet. And I'm not sure at what point that happened, but I know that there were changes in 1965 in that area where the zoning commission said they didn't want any more multifamily dwellings, which I kind of understand because it's a family area. As you can see, those driveways connect the whole project, and there's adequate green space around them. I have plenty of parking off the street, and the building is easily capable of supporting two families. The other two are still operating as duplexes and have for 83 years. They are under different ownership. I, when I bought the property in 19, I mean, in 2020, I was under the impression that it was a duplex and that I would be able to rent it as such. I ran into some obstacles, and I have to say, the first glimmer of light I've seen in this process has been with Mel Wilson's office because they've handled this whole issue professionally and with kindness. All I ask is that the site be changed from R5 to R6. I think it qualifies, and I see no reason for it to not be approved. Of course, that will be your decision. Thank you.
Questions, anyone? What are you doing with the property now? Are you renting it, or?
Nothing.
It's empty.
I can't rent it because I can't.
Okay.
I can't get a building permit without the appropriate zoning.
Okay.
And it's starting to get a little costly.
Right.
What is the duration of the potential lease that you envision?
Well, I hope to get long-term renters in there. I own the house, the single family, and I have a couple in there now, and they're on an annual lease, and they expect to renew that.
Airbnb and those type of things aren't?
No. I initially, I honestly, initially, I had hoped to rent it to travel nurses because there was such a need for housing for them, and they were being asked to stay in some pretty terrible places. And I thought, well, that'd be great, rent it to travel nurses, furnish it. But that's a lot of work, and there's a lot of changeover, and you have to screen people as they come. So I was fortunate enough to find a young couple looking for a furnished house, and it was exactly what they wanted, and they're exactly what I wanted. That has convinced me that's what I want to do with the other, the other building.
Hey, anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. At this time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal. We'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. You get the vote. Let the record show one opposed. Let the record show none, and that concludes this hearing. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to PC 36-23.
Good evening. PC 36-23 Tronan Tan is a request for conditional use permits in C2 shopping district on the track side of 0.58 acres located in the west of Limi Ferry Road and Hickory House Lane. According to the county context map, the subject site is located in the south county, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is the land use map. The, according, to the north of the subject site is quick trip. So, to the, to the east, a commercial development, and to the south is a brick and tract, and to the west are single family residences. And this is the area photograph of the subject site. Again, the petitioner is requesting a conditional use permit in the C2 plan, in C2 commercial district, which is, according to the zoning ordinance, C2 commercial shopping district encompasses areas wherein may be located short stores and service facilities as provide a wide range of goods and services usually used, consumed, or needed in the home or by individuals. The proposed use is a vehicle repair facility, and according to the zoning ordinance, COP is required to operate a vehicle repair facility for automobiles. So the north, northwest to public hearing notice. Northwest showing the existing building. Northwest showing the Abutment Road. Southeast across Limi Ferry. This is south along Limi Ferry. North along Limi Ferry. This is northeast showing commercial development, square trip. Northwest showing the site preference, the ray of the property. Northwest showing the existing gate. Southeast showing the ray of the building. The northeast showing western property limit. This is to the southwest showing another, like, curb cuts across the Abutment Road that is Hickory Road. The northeast showing the existing signage.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
I can take the speaker card.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name is Ramon Sarmiento. I'm the architect for the project and representative for the owner.
Go ahead.
So we are proposing to build a car repair facility on the existing site, and this is the civil engineering drawings prepared by our engineer, and we've been consulting with them, make sure that all the county's concerns on rainwater and other things on site are being properly handled. This is the proposed floor plan of the building, which has a garage door in front and in the back. Proposed ceiling plan, which will have just an open trusses roof plan, and then the elevation of the building. We propose to have like a stock of finish on the outside that would be consistent with look of the adjacent quick trip building and other buildings in the immediate vicinity. Interior section. And construction details. Just an interior layout. So we feel that the proposed project would be consistent in the area. We are planning on using the existing curb cuts. We're not proposing any more access to Limi Ferry, which I believe is a concern of the traffic department. And from the previous use, the customers of the proposed car shop will not be increasing the traffic in that area.
Questions, anyone?
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, just on the plan, if you came in, the bays on one side, could, would you drive through and you could exit the other way, or is it like a pull-in and you pull out?
You pull in, you pull out, and then there's actually equipment.
In the middle.
In the middle.
Okay.
So you can't just drive through it.
Right. Thank you.
Do you plan any changes to the structure, other than the garage doors?
It's a new, a whole structure.
We're tearing the existing building down.
Because it used to be a bakery.
Yeah, I believe so. It's like a restaurant or something.
It really was MacArthur's Bakery.
Was it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
And if I may add, owner just noted that they are not doing any bodywork, so there's no, you know, increased noise in the area, and they're not doing any tires. So there's no concern on used tires being piled up on the property.
What's the hours of operation? Go ahead and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Tangs. The business hour from Monday to Friday, eight to five, and Saturday will be eight to noon.
How many employees?
Total of five, including with me.
Are you operating someplace now?
Yes.
Where's that?
On CD, right on the corner of the Loberoof and Morganfor.
Okay.
Yeah, Sydney 900, Morganfor.
Right. Okay. Okay, question, anyone? Todd?
How many cars will be left overnight, and how many do you expect to be out on your lot?
I would say around five up to eight around outside waiting for working on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you wanting to do anything other than auto repair?
We don't do auto body.
You don't do selling, or?
I know that I'm sell car, no.
Okay.
Just a repair.
How extensive repairs do you do? Is it just like you replace bad parts, or do you rebuild engines, or?
I rebuild transmission, repair the brakes, you know, and swap the engine, stuff like that.
See, you have a thing for the oil and all that stuff, the hazardous material and?
Yeah.
The asbestos in the brakes and so forth?
No, I don't.
The asbestos in the brakes?
I don't understand your question, sir.
Well, how are you going to deal with the brake? If you do a brake job, there's asbestos, correct?
So the old one, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. I got somebody hard away, the, what they call the metal, when they pick it up, the old metal and everything stuff I don't need, I just put on the side so they come by to pick it up.
Would there be any outside storage?
Uh, no, ma'am.
So all the used parts would be kept inside?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yes. Same thing, the place I work right now, everything have to be inside, not outside.
Are you gonna sell tires?
I don't do tires.
What about signage? Any signs or, or?
I'm sorry.
Lit signs or signs for advertising outside the building or on the street? Anything at all?
You mean on the, on the top of the building, you mean?
Perhaps. Do you, do you plan on having a sign?
Yes, I plan to have one, yes.
Will it be on the building, or will it?
Uh, it will be on the building, and I saw the, they got the old sign on the, yeah, that's in the side there. They got the old one already. I did not know how it work. I may ask the side people, see what they can do about that, or just remove that one, put on one on the building only, or can I do that one? I don't know yet on that one, to be honest with you. Yeah. Because I don't know exactly what side I put it in. I did not talk to the side person yet, so, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, but thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal then. We'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition.
I see four.
Let the record show four. Those opposed or with concerns. Let the record show none.
Oh, two.
Two. Let the record show two, and that concludes this hearing. We appreciate your comments. With that, we'll go to the next item, which is PC 38-23.
Oh, I think we're on 37. Yeah, it's double-sided, same paper.
37-23.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 37-23 Charles Tom Bowman. The request for, for a change in zoning from C8 and FPC8 to an amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District and R2 Residence District and FPR2 Flood Plane Residential District. The tract, the tract size is on the 2.85 acres on the north side of Manchester Road, which is approximately 350 feet west of Barrett Station Road. You can see on the context map that this location is in West County, and on the red, on the right, you can see the site outlined in red. From the land use map, you can see that the site is located on Manchester Road, which is surrounded by and dominated by commercial uses along the frontage. You can see beyond that commercial frontage, a mixture of primarily single-family homes with some multifamily. The department would also like to note the existence of the Grand Glaze Creek Flood Plane running through the petition site, and also the close proximity to the municipalities of Town and Country and DePere. Here is a larger aerial with the site once again outlined in red. The site is currently Zoned C8 Plan Commercial District, which establishes a combination of developments and uses for which no provision is made in any other single C commercial district, or establishes developments and uses in locations appropriate under approved site plans and conditions. Currently, ordinance 27,777 permits uses permitted in the C3 Shopping District with a conditional use permit, and prohibits freestanding fast food restaurants or service stations and vehicle service centers. Drive-through facilities may only be allowed in conjunction with a bank, and no more than one freestanding ATM is, that is not associated with a financial institution, institution is permitted within the C8 development. For this particular petition, petitioner is proposing an advertising sign, which is prohibited by the C8 ordinance, which is the reason for this, for this hearing. This is facing north into the site, towards the public hearing notice. This is facing east along Manchester Road. This is south across Manchester Road towards that other side of the commercial frontage. This is facing west down Manchester Road. This is facing north at the adjacent property, which is a strip retail center. This is facing north along the eastern property line. Facing west into the property. As you can see, it's heavily wooded and overgrown with vegetation. This is facing north. North once again, where you can actually see Grand Glaze Creek running through the site. This is facing north now along the western property line, and this is facing west towards the abutting commercial use. And now the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So you just want to angle it towards that door.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Tom Bowman. I own the property here at 2173 Barrett Station Road. We actually live on the north end of the property. We bought it years ago to give us some buffer between our house and the commercial property. We've cleaned it up quite a bit. Our kids play back there, walk the dog back there. It's just been a nice addition to our, to our yard. It's undevelopable, undevelopable flood plain, so there's not a lot you can do with it. I asked Melissa from Portier Advertising if it was a possibility to put a billboard there, and she looked into it, determined that it was a viable site, and looked into our indentures and found out that it's not, C8, I guess, allows for it, but it doesn't, it's not written into our original indentures. So we're asking to have that added into the original indentures in, in return, or in addition, convert the back majority portion to residential, removing a lot of commercial property in the county out of flood plain into, from commercial to residential. So hopefully, that's a win-win for everybody, leaving the front half along Manchester, just a little over acre, commercial where we would put the billboard. So those are the, those are details, anything that, any questions or anything?
Questions, anyone?
So just to confirm, so the back half, that's next door to where you live, and you're gonna make that residential?
That's what we're proposing, that the upper half, the 1.76 acres, is adjacent to our house now.
So you would subdivide, so you would subdivide this property into two lots?
Yeah, we were told that it would be advantageous to have less commercial property in floodplain for the county, be a win-win for, for everybody. So we, we're gonna remove that chunk out of commercial into residential.
Do you have, um, like the site plan with the location of the billboard in your presentation?
We do. There's a rendering.
Can you, can you go back?
Go a little slower.
Can you go back to that rendering?
Oh. So I'm Melissa Porlier, I'm with the sign. We assisted with the site plan for where the actual advertising sign would go.
Melissa, could you go up to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
It's all right for in here, but for our live stream, it's harder to hear.
I understand, sorry about that. If we can go back one, this is the actual site plan. I don't know if you have a zoomed up version in front of you because we needed to show all of any easements or anything that is also already existing on the property itself. So tucked in close to Manchester Road on the western side of the property is actually where there's open placement for the billboard structure while also complying with all the setback requirements. So it's a little triangle with the back of it opening up towards the north end.
Are you seeing it?
Questions, anyone?
I assume, I'm sorry. I assume you'd be bringing electric to the, to the sign, is that true?
Yes, we will bring in electric to the sign. Um, there's a lot of existing electric nearby, so it should be a very easy, usually they'll do an overhang to a weatherhead on the structure itself.
Anyone else?
And what were the dimensions of the proposed sign?
Um, it's fourteen, the actual face of this, of one of each side of the structure of the face is fourteen feet tall by forty-eight feet wide. That's the standard billboard size. It does comply with St. Louis County sign regulations for advertising signs. Um, and then the height of the billboard itself, it will extend thirty-five feet above, to the very top above the grade of Manchester.
What would be the legal arrangement between your company and the owner? You're not selling them that portion of the land, so it would be a ground lease?
It's a ground lease.
Ninety-nine years or what is it?
Um, we have a thirty-year.
Thirty years?
Yes.
And it just gives you the ability to own and operate a sign on that triangle quadrant?
And there, there is a sign directly south on Manchester, right? Parallel to where that one would be, that you can't see, but there's, there's one right across Manchester.
On the other side of the street?
Yes, yeah, just out of the frame.
What's, what's gonna be the legal arrangement for the residential component on the back northern, the northern end of this, uh, this plot?
No, it would still be in my name. It's adjacent to our house that we've lived in for eighteen years and it would just be an extension of our residential property.
So are you planning to build on that?
No, it's, it's all floodplain, there's nothing you could, nothing you could do there. We really, go ahead.
I was gonna say you're intending to keep the parcel separate from your parcel?
Yeah, we could combine it if it, if it makes sense. I have no, I'm, I could do it either way, whatever makes the most sense. It's undevelopable, otherwise somebody would have done something there fifty years ago, it's just a
But part of it's in the floodplain?
All, all, pretty much all of it.
This site was zoned C eight as part of the zoning for the commercial complex to the, to the east of it. And this parcel, since it was in the floodplain, was just never developed as part of that.
I don't think I would attach it to my residential lot, I'd think about that.
Yeah, that, that wasn't the plan unless someone gives us a reason to do that, but it would be our home, the residential lot and the commercial lot.
Yeah.
How would you, how are you gonna maintain and get access to that? Do you have to do a curb cut? How are you gonna get to the sign to?
Yes.
And then my, I guess my next question, is it gonna be digital? Is it gonna be constantly changing or are you gonna be up there changing it every month?
So the, the first question about the access, there's a MoDOT projects, um, starting next April from Barrett Station to, I think, one forty-one. And there's a moratorium, any, anything being done along there until that's completed. So our plan was to, if this gets approved, work with the contractor to leave a curb cut into the property. So we wouldn't be doing anything right away, we would still wait till that. They're redoing all the sidewalks and all the curbs and everything along Manchester there next summer. So it would all be done in conjunction with that if it gets approved.
And would that be asphalt, concrete, gravel, whatever?
Yeah, a little bit of everything probably, yeah.
Either sufficient for the billboard for access, so it would just be whatever MoDOT traffic requires.
And we have all the, we've talked to the MoDOT representative for that area and we have all the specs and requirements for, for what it needs. And then the second question is about the
Is it digital or is it a monthly where there's gonna be a lot of access to change the sign?
Um, they're both sides, um, are requesting to be digital. So it would be, um, it's all run by software.
Okay.
Yeah, minimal access, yeah.
Not, not, not a lot of maintenance?
Exactly.
Yeah, there'd be little in and out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any fencing planned?
Excuse me?
Any fencing?
Not unless, we weren't planning it unless we
No, we don't have any unless the county requested it. Um, but to access the signs, um, the ladders are high to where someone would need their own ladder to get access to. Um, so that's how we, um, our people actually access the structures to climb them if need be. But we don't have fencing unless you guys would like
So there's not gonna be like across the curb cut to keep people from pulling in?
Oh, for like gate access?
Gate or anything?
I think that would be up to Mr. Bowman if he would like it or if the county suggests.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't unless there was an issue of people started going in there or if it was requirement, then we would do it. But the plan would be to have that curb cut, clean all that overgrowth up, maybe do some nice, you know, more nice evergreen trees or something to make it look a little nicer, but definitely clean it up.
Has MoDOT agreed to a curb cut?
Yes, yep. And we started down that road and then we found out, then we realized that the big
The ADA project.
The project, yeah. So it would be, you know, if we did it now, it'd be a waste of time because they're just gonna tear it out. So we just decided to, to wait and see if they would work with us on it.
Do you have a plan B in case MoDOT doesn't agree on a curb cut?
We met with MoDOT, and they've actually suggested, to my understanding, that he's able to work directly to with the sub that's doing the work if he, while they're going through there to incorporate his own curb cup as part of it. So I know before we were introduced, he had a lot of conversations with MoDOT.
Yeah, I had been talking to
That's what I meant, did MoDOT agree to it? I don't care what the contractor agreed to.
Yeah, and they, they basically said, if you see that yellow sign there that were the, the entrances for the neighboring property, they just said it'd have to be a hundred feet west of that and we'll, we would be way beyond the hundred feet of that. And they said since it wasn't, it wasn't gonna be, his example was a Starbucks with a lot of traffic. There'd be very, you know, maybe one truck once a month or less, once a quarter. There'd be no traffic, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Let the record show none. At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, you get the vote, so. Let the record show three, opposed or with concerns. Let the record show none, and that concludes this hearing, thank you. Next is thirty-eight dash twenty-three, Jared Fryman.
Good evening, PC thirty-eight dash twenty-three, Jared Fryman. Is a request for a conditional use permit in the M one industrial district for zero point four one acres, located at the northwest quadrant of Midwest Industrial Boulevard and Ashby Road. As the commission can see, this site is located in mid-county and to your right is the site outlined in red. Per the land use map, this site is surrounded primarily by office and warehouse uses um, in a mixture of the M one and C seven. Staff would also note that the site is also bordering along the lines of Overland and Creve Cor. And a little bit of all of it. This is just a larger aerial, so you can see the site outlined right next to some of those M one uses. So with the conditional use permit, all C U P requests shall be evaluated and a decision made based on whether the proposed use is consistent with good planning practice, um, can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the permitted development uses in the district, can be developed and operated in a manner that is visually compatible with the permitted uses in the surrounding area and are deemed essential or desirable to preserve and promote the public health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County. In the M one industrial district, it encompasses areas that are adequate for public utility facilities required by an industry. Currently in the M one, gymnasiums are considered a conditional land use in this district. Um, tonight, the request is for a gymnasium, including personal training studio. This is looking west, as you can see, the public hearing notice as well as the existing building on the site. This is looking north up Ashby Road. This is looking east across Ashby. This is looking south down Ashby Road. This is looking west along the Midwest Industrial Boulevard. This is looking south across Midwest Industrial Boulevard. This is looking north into the building. This is looking west along the back of the building. This is looking north, um, across the parking lot, um, for the back of the building. This is looking south, um, towards the industrial boulevard. This is looking south at that curb cut coming in from Midwest Industrial Boulevard. This is looking north at the side of the building where they do have some parking. And this is looking east through the site. Next we'll have the petitioner.
Okay, thank you.
I am Jared Fryman. For the building, um, let's see, we have the one oh six, two seven Midwest Industrial Boulevard. And what I currently do is a personal training studio. So I rent just a few blocks away and I had the opportunity of this building, so looking to go to just a little larger place. And here's a site plan that we have, uh, up on the screen. And on the outside of the building, it shows the parking. I'm not gonna do really anything than clean it up a little bit on the outside. Uh, mainly on the inside of what I do, just to give you an idea, it's just personal training. So I put some slides together to show, most of what I do is just one-on-one. I have some small group of one-on-two training. I do stretching, conditioning for nutrition and for different clients around the community. Uh, we have clients that come in from, ranging from St. Charles down to St., downtown St. Louis to South County. So we've got a variety of clients that come in currently. In the inside of our studio that we have right now is just your basic weightlifting equipment in there. Um, we got a track that runs along the side. This is pretty much what I'm looking to do in the newer building. It's just a little bit more area to move, so we'll have a track that runs on the side. Same thing, we'll have room for more equipment to come in. So I got a few more friends, trainers that can come in and work and staff also. Got functional training that we like to do. It's a little tight where I'm at now, so it'll give a little more room for some functional training as well inside the studio. Do a lot of conditioning, got a handful of clients, I like to get into body competition training, some of the bodybuilding as well. So a little variety of what I service. Uh, here's a little example, just a group stretching, um, that come in, I got the stretching table. The new place will have some more like rooms that we can get a little more off the track, so it opens it up. It's a little tight where I'm at now. In the past, and what I could do is I like to do a lot of stuff with the community. Here I got a couple of things I've done outside, uh, in the parking lot, some parks. I like to do some fundraising and, um, I've always been big in just a group fitness camaraderie. I'll live by my past, served in the Marine Corps, I love doing stuff with fundraising. And I got a couple of fundraising I like to promote, so. That kind of wraps up about what I do now, just how I'm just trying to expand a little bigger and found a building a little larger. So I think that maybe
Questions, anyone?
Yes.
How many parking spaces do you have in your current building?
Uh, they have a design now, um, for, is it like nine, ten, like eleven? So we have to get, um, about five more spots. So the next door, the show me flooring was just purchased. The neighbors and they have the two lots next to me. And I was talking about, it's in the works, I'm just getting a, um, a cross easement access.
Cross access, cross parking is what?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
So getting that with them in conjunction with that big lot in the back. And, um, the outside, the way they designed some of the lots, um, they didn't make any spaces in the back. So technically it only has like the eleven or whatever it is. There is room for a couple more spots there.
I'm a little confused, so how many spots do you have now in your building? Not in this, not in this new building?
Oh, right now, um, I'm at United Bags running within Creve Cor there. And, um, there's probably about twelve or so outside my
And how many will you have in this building?
So there'd be fifteen that it requires, yes. Yes. I think in the back, what was that? It's kinda, it's kinda hard to see. Where they have the side parking and there's some back parking.
Yeah, there's ten spaces on this piece of property and then he would, if he gets cross access, cross parking with his neighbor to the north. There, I don't think they're striping, but there would be additional parking available there.
Okay, anyone else, question?
How long have you been in business?
Um, I came into St. Louis County in two thousand eight. So got out of the Marine Corps, went to S I U E and then came over to St. Louis and started working since then.
Hours of operation?
Uh, hours of operation typically start like five thirty, six AM and, um, evening time closes up about six, seven PM. So personal training is a little bit different to where you have a little law in the day. So it's like a little heavier in the front, earlier mornings before work for most and then evening time post-work. Then you got some like, um, basically seven days a week for trainers. So it kind of floats in there to some mid-morning on the weekends and then same thing, Saturdays, Sundays.
Do you do a lot of activity or any activity out, outside? Did you say you do, do some things in the parking lots or?
A lot of times it's just, uh, like some of the stuff I did there, just going to the parks. So it's like, well, take some equipment, go down to some of the local parks and, uh, don't worry about all of that. I've done some stuff at the parks there. Most stuff's inside because it's a lot easier, you have the equipment. And I do a lot of stuff, I mean, even pre-rehab, post-rehab stuff. So it's kind of specific on having the equipment at hand.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Hey, thank you very much.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Let the record show none. At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. You get the vote, so. Let the record show two, opposed or with concern? Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing, thank you.
Do you want to adjourn public hearing and then I can call roll for the executive session? Did you move?
Make a motion to
We have a second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment, opposed?
Oh, Jonathan has. Uh, yeah, and we did publish it. Yeah, with the exec, with the executive session, yes. Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. Um, I'll call roll from the podium. Um, I'll call roll from the podium. Okay, Mr. Elliott, just calling roll. Ms. Hancock? Mr. Bedell?
Yeah.
Mr. Sneed? Mr. Hilsinger? Mr. Taylor? Mr. Cunningham? Ms. Hart? Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Okay, let the record show, we've got eight. I don't know if we have any opening remarks?
No, we have several letters. I don't know if you would like to do them all together or separately, because some have just a couple of tweaks.
As long as there's no opposition, let's do them together.
So the four letters, PC 27, 23 Real Estate Partners, PC 29, 23 LaShawna K. Douglas, PC 30, 23 Melanie Huddleston, and PC 34, 23 are all letters consistent with the commission's actions from last month. That's a recommendation of approval for real estate partners with the added hours of operation and fencing conditions around the pickleball court. A recommendation of denial for LaShawna K. Douglas, and then recommendations of approval for 30, 23, and 34, 23.
And these are all consistent with what?
Yes, they all match what your actions from last week.
Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? I have it eight, zero. You want to do correspondence?
We have one correspondence item. This is PC 10277 Raymond Helmick. This is a C8, a C8 plan commercial district that permits the, the C2 permitted uses. So in 1977, when the C8 was established, tattoo parlors were a permitted use in the C2 shopping district, and they would have been permitted when the C8 was established and when the, the site was developed. Let me pull the aerial up. So you can see this is a commercial development on the west side of West Florissant, just north of Interstate 270. However, in the 90s, there was an amendment to the zoning ordinance to take tattoo parlors from a permitted use in the C2 and the C3 to being a, a conditional use. So what that meant is that C8 ordinances that permitted all C2 shopping district uses went from permitting tattoo parlors to prohibiting them. We find that they are a compatible use with the C2, the C3 general shopping district uses. This, this is a multi-tenant retail development where one space would be reoccupied by a tattoo parlor. So we have recommended adding one tattoo parlor to the permitted uses in the C8.
Okay, we need a motion or whatever. Anyone?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Do we know how many tattoo parlors there are in the area?
I don't think there are many, I don't think, I don't think there are any others along West Florissant here. The commission has seen a couple of requests like this in the past couple of years, like exactly like this basically, where the C8 permitted the use, and then after the text amendment, didn't anymore, but most of them were in South County.
Seeing anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it eight, zero. Anything for the good of the ordinance?
Just that our next meeting is next year. The executive meeting in January, we would like to have in person because as we continue to work on the comprehensive plan, the consultant, AECom, our professional firm, is going to come and present the detailed engagement plan. So basically how we'll go out into the community and engage people throughout the planning process. They're going to come on Monday, the 8th, and present that plan to the pla, uh, excuse me, to the county executive. But then we'd like for them to come and present to you as well at the beginning of your executive meeting. And we think that would just be a little more valuable in person. So we'll give you more details, but that, I think, is our next meeting, January 8th, 2024.
Is that agreeable with everybody? Okay. With that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it eight, zero, and see you next...
See you next year, I love saying that.
It'd be good to be seen next. Especially you know...